Yes.
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 Allison?
You want to go?
Oh, yes.
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 Okay, great.
Yeah, Mike, you can send a link to the videotape.
Video tape.
You have it queued up for.
I did that on purpose.
Next, we, the PTO has nominated, PTO Executive Committee has nominated Liz Saul to be a parent rep for July 1st, 2016 through June period 2017. So I would like to make a motion to accept their nomination and appoint Liz as the parent rep.
Second.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Oh, Allison?
Yeah, I was waiting, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Liz, for accepting this role for a second year. It's been great having you. It's been great having you as parent rep this year, and so we're very glad that you'll be joining for a second year. And then finally, the faculty has voted for Tom Azarito to be the faculty rep to the board for the period from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. So I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Before we have a motion, there's some question marks on Tom's end date, and I didn't know if that was just a typo or are we actually concerned about him?
I think that was a typo. That's what was on there, but then when we printed it out, no, it is June 30th, 2017. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the nominee as Tom has.
Shouldn't it be, wait, I'm sorry, shouldn't it be 2018?
No.
One year.
It's a single year.
But he can be reelected on this way.
Yes.
Second? We need a second?
I said one.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. Sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
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 Allison?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed to vote, but absolutely yes.
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 Great. Tom, congratulations on the role. I couldn't get to talk about this, but would you like to make any statements now or is I to do that next time?
I think next time is fine.
Okay. All right.
See, he's always shown a good political sense there. Don't commit to anything verbally.
So next, as part of the annual meeting, we also go through our committee assignments. So this is the current committee structure. We obviously will be replacing Jess with Tom, but he does not necessarily need to join the Education Committee.
Yeah, he does.
What?
Yes, he does.
You know what Martin Jomwetford Committee would like, and I will talk with him.
I already did.
So everyone take a look at this. This is just how it has been this past year. This is the formal standing committees, the four standing committees. There's a separate on your page, there's a separate one on Task Force assignments. We just created two more. But these are the, oh, let me print it out. These are not as of 2014-15, they're as of now.
Yeah, I have 2014-15 in my packet.
Yeah, I don't know why that is. The headings came out wrong. Because these were the Task Force, okay, these are committee assignments 2015-16. So can everyone check their committee assignments and are, oh, there's two of them. And do you want to remain on these committees?
What that is is not what we have in our packets.
Yeah, I just realized that. So this is the committee one. There's a separate one, which is the Task Force.
Okay, we have Task Force in our packets.
Yeah, there should be one, there should be one committee and one Task Force.
Okay.
So this is the committee one. And I have not, we haven't discussed this, but I don't know if people feel like they want to change any of the committees that they're on. We are not voting for committee chairs, the committee chair stay, that's every other year. So it's just a matter of whether you want to stay on this particular committee or anyone else make comments about making two different committees. Except for Tom.
Yes, so what do we do about Tom? Do we try and just separate that to Education or Teaching?
No, so Tom can choose. Tom can go to a couple of committee meetings and then we can determine. So officially for the committees, for trustees, I appoint people to the committees, and then the committee chairs can appoint anyone else that they want to the committee. So Tom won't be on here, but everyone else will stay on here. So I'm going to appoint everyone to this committee. Can you also move to Task Force? Task Force, these are already the ones that are underway. So this is just a reminder sort of of who is doing what. Yes, this is the one on the screen.
Wait, I started with Task Force. They kind of, they come and go.
Yeah, they do come and go. They do. They come and go. So this is just how it is for now. It's just more to remind everybody, these are your, this is what you've signed up for. And they are sort of coming and going. Like the collective bargaining Task Force is really going to be gone because after today.
No.
Of course, she's got a little C over on her new Task Force.
I think as we go, I mean, I think we should call it Task Force, Survey Action Planning Task Force.
Okay, yeah.
That's different from, you know, the governance and the oversight of the survey.
Right.
Because of the action part.
Okay, Survey Action Planning Task Force, that's our one. Okay.
Scott will be back.
And do you have to be a board member to be on a Task Force?
No.
No.
No, so like we're special, these are just the board members that are on here.
Right, I know committees, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, especially Task Force has Jess Penney as well as Rob and Jerry on it right now. I think some of these you have to, plus the bargaining obviously have to be board members, because the others do not. All right, so that, wanted to remind everyone before we begin with this. Okay, so now we move on to collective bargaining contracts. I put Mike here to talk about the contract that we made. We have it all in our files.
So is it, I.
Can you sort of summarize again?
Yeah, I'm not sure how detailed to summarize. I do know what we're going to do. I do want to acknowledge the faculty team. And, you know, it was a very interesting experience. I have not participated in this before. That was a, it's a tricky conversation. And what I found more than anything was that the faculty members who were participating made it easy to negotiate in the end because they were so authentic in their passion and desire to do the right thing. It never felt emotional or self-serving or anything like that. I just want to compliment that team because it's got to be hard defending a constituency base that anytime you have a base that size, I'm sure they're not completely aligned, and they have to find a way to do that. And so fascinating experience to be a part of, but made easier because of the quality of passion of folks that were there. And so Allison, I don't know if there's anything you'd add to that, but Allison, I would talk about that on a fairly regular basis.
You know, I would just say, Mike, that I think that the entire process of the year went very smoothly from everything all sides, but it was an integral process. We had good conversations, sometimes a little difficult, but everybody was professional, and I think that made all the difference. And we really worked together from both sides of the table. So it was all in all a very positive experience, and I feel very good about it.
So I think that so great Allison was a great partner. I think this contract speaks for itself. I think it's a good contract. You know, we talked about this evaluation component, was something that was very important to me and was initiated by the teachers and I think made better through the whole process. I think we've added, in this evaluation process, a level of rigor and discipline that will help to ensure that the evaluations are followed in a very structured way, that they're followed up with an email, followed up with a meeting that's available to them. And it really allows for regular ongoing documented conversations, and I think that'll help eliminate what's been so concerning in the past, which has led to trust issues, which is that they felt more arbitrary. And I think we've begun to eliminate that. Dr. McLeary and the administration team were particularly helpful, I think, in this process, the board and also the negotiating team. So that's a piece that's very exciting. I think we tried to meet a lot of the demands from the teachers. We weren't able to accommodate all of them, but I think in the end, I think we're better this year than we were with the previous contract for everybody.
That's great. So I would like to remind everyone before we vote, this is a two-year contract. So this will be covering the period from August 24th, 2016 through 2018.
And also, we can remind, the teachers have already voted yes on this.
Yes, the teachers have voted yes. They voted last.
We voted on Friday, the last day of school.
I have a motion to accept the contract. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Allison?
Again, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Alex Stein?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, congratulations.
Oh, no, everyone.
Good job. Excellent. Really, both Allison and Mike spent an incredible amount of time during a number of negotiating sessions. We as a board obviously had a number of executive sessions to discuss for so many hours to come to this. It's great that we were able to come to.
Double their pay.
Double your pay. You now get, you know.
Two slices of pizza. And as Mike said, too, the teachers who were on the negotiating committee also put in all of those hours. So thank you to all of you who put in so many hours.
Okay. Regional Issues Task Force, Ken.
So we had our kickoff meeting on June 15th. We had two parents from Maynard, including myself, two from Clinton, two from Hudson, including Lisa Anderson, one from Marlboro, and one from Framingham. So there's representation sort of across, you know, while it's focused on, while we are trying to, you know, get some sense of what's happening in the other three core towns, we are interested in trying to solve these problems more broadly. If you remember, the, we have a charter responsibility to make sure that we continue to serve all four core towns, which was the genesis of this. So on June 15th, we had a kickoff meeting. Not every person could attend, but we had great attendance, plus a couple of guests. We spent some time identifying some issues, such as transportation. Obviously, transportation is a big issue. And not only bus transportation, but carpooling, after-school activities and that type of thing. So that's one issue. The other one is how they create a greater sense of the ANSA community early on, particularly with like incoming sixth graders, but other incoming new students as well. We have a lot of new students that are coming in, not just sixth graders this year. But then even after, after the school year starts, what are the activities that we should be doing in a school to try to incorporate? You know, there are certain events, like the Wachusett hike for the sixth graders, but I've heard comments a number of times that, you know, we ought to have a number of those activities going on throughout the course of the year, within grades to try to get the, each of the classes together, but also across the school as a whole. So we had a good, we had a good meeting and broken some teams to address. We had tentatively set a meeting for June 30th, but due to a family emergency on my part, I'm going to have to be out of town on June 30th. And so we moved it up to June 28th, so that's next Tuesday in the lower school cafeteria, and I'll have an announcement when I, but we just got that coordinated today. So that's late breaking news. It would be helpful, I think, to have representation from the school on the committee. Obviously, members of the faculty, they hear things that students say about the difficulties they have. Guidance counselors probably do as well, members of administration. So it would be helpful, and I reached out to Dr. McLeary to see if we could get some representation. While that hasn't happened yet, one of the things that he did do is send out a survey to the department chairs to try to gather some information, which was very helpful, was sort of an initial stage setting. So I'll be sharing that along with some of the data that I've gotten from the administration in response to data requests. So things are going well. I'm trying to get some momentum going before we sort of go into some hiatus. If things work out as we sort of plan, we'll have some teams working towards addressing some, addressing some things. I have to say, though, in all likelihood, we're going to, you know, we're probably, we're going, you know, one of the things that we'd like to do is do some surveying, wholesome meetings and stuff like that. That clearly is going to be much easier to do once school has started back up, but we want to lay some groundwork now. I think one of the things that in particular, the reason why I'd like to lay some of the groundwork right now is we've identified some issues around transportation and community building that, you know, it would be helpful for the incoming sixth graders. I know of one sixth grader, incoming sixth grader, no, excuse me, incoming seventh grader, I believe, who came to sort of the evening when, you know, the kids got together and so forth, and felt, you know, so sort of alone in that whole thing and that there was not a sort of basic attempts to made to try to bring kids from the outside, the non-Marlboro core towns, that this child, who was already on the, you know, sort of cusp of accepting to come to the ANSA or not, made a decision not to, just based on that. Well, so again, was already leaning that way towards not, but her parent had encouraged her to come to this, but that event, again, not building community just sort of was a tipping point.
Can you, what event was that, Ken? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
What event are you referring to?
So this is the event where they bring the kids together for like a pizza night and stuff.
There's a pizza night for new students?
Correct.
Do you know when that was?
Recently, I don't even know.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. I just, I didn't know which event it was.
So I don't want to overblow a single data point, and especially in the case that I know that, you know, she was already wavering and so forth. But you got to ask yourself the question of, you know, if we were more welcoming, you know, how many more students would we be picking up from the non-core towns? And given the numbers, the numbers are not, don't give indication that we may not be serving. Now, there may, in the end, maybe we can't do a whole lot of things, but I'm hoping that, you know, that we will be able to make some progress towards that.
Just one point of clarification is not non-core towns, but non-Albro towns.
Excuse me, non, yeah, so the non-Marlboro core town.
Yeah, right.
Although we do have representatives from.
Non-core towns.
Non-core towns. And I think that's it.
Do you need Iander support from the board?
No, you know, I think at this point, at this point, we've just got to get, you know, our legs under us and start doing some things as a team. I mean, obviously, if anybody's interested in coming to the meeting and so forth, then just staying in that way, they'd be fine. But, you know, I think we're just, it's still in the data gathering mode at this point. So thank you for asking.
Ken, if I may, I'm wondering if you said that some people in the school that could help you, I'm wondering if you've reached out to Maureen Evans. I know she works with the Leaders of Tomorrow, which is a student leadership group we have on campus, and sort of if they could kind of, you know, hey, there's a new kid here, be a buddy or look out for that person, or that kind of role, if that's something you've investigated.
So I reached out to Dr. McLeary, and Dr. McLeary is considering.
Okay, so rounding out Chair business, there are a couple of things that I would like to announce. One is that following up with our charter renewal by DEES last year, two years ago, we had conditions that were placed on our renewal. DEES came in April, and we had the site visit. They removed those conditions. However, they did add other conditions. And so I actually had a discussion with our representative from DEES today, and we talked through sort of the timeline. One of the conditions was for the board to have a tool, to explain the tool that the board was going to use to evaluate the executive director. And so I talked about the board on track, so we'll talk about that in governance. But that was, that tool is acceptable to them, and so we'll meet that. And another condition is that there be a formal evaluation system put in place for the rest of the administrative team, not the faculty, because obviously we have that, that Dr. McLeary will be designing some sort of tool, and we have until the end of September to submit these to DEES. We'll also be continuing to submit our board minutes and agendas and things like that. So we actually talked about a couple of other things as well, one of them being the, this issue of collaborating with Marlboro, as there was actually a letter of concern written by a Marlboro School Committee member, taking a lot of ANSA's publicly available data. And DEES just wrote back indicating that they obviously are very accountable, that we're leading all our accountability inquiries, and it's very supportive, so.
So they go through this period evaluating us, they renew the charter with conditions, and then they can change the conditions?
Well, so if you take a look, they continued to gather information.
Yeah, they came and got.
Okay, and based on that information, some of which includes views that have been expressed directly to DEES by, you know, parents and others, okay? So based on that, they are expanding and modifying the conditions. And this is, this is a pretty serious exercise here.
And which would not be, these interim changes in conditions would not be occurring if we hadn't got conditions first.
No. Some of them actually say ongoing. Like the thing that you sent out, it actually says ongoing.
Right, there are a couple that seem new.
Yeah, the evaluation, the three conditions, the ongoing one is that we submit our minutes and our.
So if we had gotten a condition-free charter, would we still be subject to changing conditions?
No, because there would not be. They would just come and do the sort of interim site visit, and this, they did their interim site visit in April, and sort of changed.
Well, so the first set of conditions, I don't think, you know, to me, I was, if you look at the conditions, once they're, they're directly related to a lot of the churn that we've been experiencing over that previous year. And so our re-charting went forward, there were some conditions put on. I would view those as conditions where essentially we're saying, look, we want an org chart, we want to see your minutes, we want to see several things, we want to make sure that the things that we saw here are continuing and these are sort of routine types of thing. The conditions that are, the new conditions, though, I would view much more seriously. And I guess what I'm asking is, so we have till September 30th to the dress dates, and so what is our plan to do then?
Well, basically, there are three. One is a continuation of a past condition, which is that the board submit the minutes and agenda and so forth. The other two are evaluation of the director, which we already have in place, in which Ms. Bag indicated today would be acceptable. And the third one involves giving the Department of Education an evaluation, an indication of how we're going to, how I would be evaluating the principal, the vice-principal, and so on. So I would say it's fairly routine. These are routine things that they require. When they, when they came to the site visit, to make the site visit in April, they did say, what is your evaluation instrument for the ED? And they just wanted clarification. She didn't completely understand at that time that we had, that we were going, that the board was going to use the Board on Track's instrument. So really, the remaining one, if it could be considered new, would be that we clarify the way that the director, myself, would evaluate the other administrators. It's, you know, in my experience, it's something that the department requires of every charter school.
We need to provide what that tool's actually going to be. So in my conversation with her today, I told her what we were planning on doing, which we will discuss today. And then after tonight, I will send her the, at least for our piece of it, the, what exactly that process is for board on track. And then Dr. McLeary needs to submit by September.
End of September.
End of September, okay, September 30th.
Is it just the principal and the assistant principal, or is it anybody who's not covered under the CBO? So for instance, department chairs or the special ed chair?
No, she indicated in the letter, the assistant principal or vice-principal and principal, but she didn't indicate that it would have to be, it would have to be something for the department chairs.
So this, this new report I assume will be posted along with the board materials for this meeting?
We'll probably do it. Another announcement that I wanted to make, but Roger stole my plan here, was that the St. Storin Eagles Foundation has, and the ANSA Foundation have merged. So that is, I just did want, of course, now it's gone, to publicly thank Roger for his efforts to bring those together, because it's a diplomatic exercise over the course of the year with the foundation members on the sets. That's great.
Can you, do you know how much money that is, once we've put the two together?
Oh, I don't know what it is once we put the two together, but all the amount that was remaining in the old foundation, which is much lighter. I remember the new foundation has a fund in the fundraising, so it's just the people that have been making donations to it. Or if you buy on Amazon and you designate the St. Storin Eagles Foundation, then all your purchases, it will go to whatever percentage Amazon gives, goes to the St. Storin Eagles. So I do that every time, and we've done it with them all along. The final thing that I wanted to talk about on a Chair business, but actually, there's two other things. The October board meeting is currently scheduled for, I think, the third week, and we need to change that one to the fourth week in October to accommodate the auditors. So the, the schedule with the auditors is that those finance committees have to schedule on a certain date. That's a very long meeting. And then they'll come on, whatever that next one is, I think it's October 29th?
October 7th?
27th. Whatever Thursday is, yeah, October 27th. Okay, so I just want to make everyone aware. So you probably saw a couple of weeks ago, I put in all the board meetings for the next year in Board on Track, and I left the October one alone because I wanted to sort of just make sure that you're all aware, and that's the reason that it's changing, because that one is going to.
Do we, do we know that it won't bump up into any religious holidays? October can be.
I think that's what September. So the final thing that I want, that I wanted to talk about is that is part of the effort to recruit new board members, one thing that I just want to just make a call out there to the entire community, but also some current board members to think about, is ways to have people contribute onto committees. And I want to just discuss with you if you thought it was a good idea for me to send out and field broadly within the parent community talking about that specifically. Because, you know, our committees are open. There's no reason that we can't have non-trustees on them. And in many cases, it's very helpful to bring more progressives onto committees, and then they get an understanding of what board business is about and how. and then they get an understanding of what board business is about and how it...
I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
Yeah, especially in some of the roundtables, folks say, we're, we're here to help, so it's a great way to help, it's cool.
Okay, I mean, I think that parent engagement is something that we certainly want to encourage. And it would be a way of, you know, I think we've made some effort, obviously, to, to make the board...
Meetings more transparent?
But just in terms of understanding the dialogue, maybe it's harder for that to come across.
And I think also making more transparency in the process by which one becomes a board member is positive as well. So that, I think, might help contribute to that, so it's a good idea. So anyone can join a committee, parents can join a committee, and non-parents, sort of, you know...
Yeah, non-parent, I mean Marlboro community members can join.
I'm gonna call my mom, see if she wants to join.
Ask her, tell on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, okay. With that, we're gonna go on to our committee reports. So we are actually not having a finance committee report this month, but we usually have updated financials in your packet. So if you have any questions on those, you can always ask. Governance.
So we have a number of officer elections that we need to vote on. And I'm assuming we have to do those individually, or do those as a slate individually? So in essence, it's the incumbents, there are no changes that are being proposed. And so the first one would be Pauline to remain as a officer in the position of chair of the board. And I would nominate her to continue in that position.
The two-year term.
Yeah, I have a question. Like, how does this work if someone wanted to run against someone? Do they, I don't know how this process works. Like, would they send their name to you that I want to run for a position? Or you're just, you're just...
No, it was discussed, it was discussed, it was discussed, Dr. McCleary.
What are you saying, Scott?
No, I'm, no, I'm just wondering how the process works. No, I do not want a part of any of this, for the record, I'm just wondering how the process works. And if someone did want to, how would they go, I'm putting their name, and that's all I'm asking.
I nominate Scott.
No, I'm denying nomination.
God, not with how we position ourselves.
No, 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 no. I'm just asking for clarification.
I, I agree, I would like clarification on that too.
That's all.
So is it, it's, so if, if, if somebody wants to run for an officer of the board, they go to governance?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if we're voting here right now, and somebody decides on the spot that, hey, I want that, they cannot do it?
No, of course they can. I mean, governance, governance is making the recommendation for these positions. But yes, if someone on the spot wants to...
Other nominations.
Clearly, I was just looking for the process, that's it.
But to your point, then maybe it's appropriate to say nominations are...
Yes, that's all, that's all I'm saying. Because otherwise, you're just saying, okay, this person spoke. When, if someone here wanted to be on one of those positions, they should have the right. And I don't want any of them.
I need a motion, self-nominate?
Yes, people can self-nominate. It's just that with, and you can't...
I, no, yeah, you can't be off limits. Oh, and I was gonna do it. Think what I could do with that budget.
I'm sorry, it's a positive statement, good question.
No, it's a new question, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so going once, going twice, nominations are closed.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, okay. So we have Pauline being nominated for chair, continuing on as chair of the board to a year term. And we would need a second for that.
Second. I'll second. I'm sure I'll second, I'll be really quick.
Okay, we need a roll call then.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, second, we have Rick for co-chair. And I'll ask the same question, are there any other individuals?
Vice chair.
I'm sorry. Vice chair, are there any individuals who would like to nominate others or self-nominate for a vice chair? Not?
Just to clarify, this is two-year term again?
Two-year, two-year term. If not, nominations are closed. And we will proceed forward, and would like to nominate Rick for vice chair?
All right.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 Okay, there we go.
All right, nominations are now open for secretary. First one, we have Allison.
God, not too late.
No, no.
Okay. Going once, going twice, nominations are closed, and this is a two-year term?
Awesome.
Nominations are closed. And I make a motion that we nominate Allison for the next two years for secretary.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the last one we have is treasurer. The nominations are open for treasurer, we have Tom, who is the incumbent in that position. Anybody like to nominate others or self-nominate for treasurer?
Tom?
Going once, twice, nominations are closed. So I would propose that we, I nominate Tom to continue on as treasurer. When, two years? I'm not exactly sure, two years. Oh, two years. And I heard a second.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Allison?
Yes.
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 All right.
All right, I think that is it.
Thank you. It for officer elections, but now we'll move on to the next.
Okay, ED evaluation process has been mentioned, referred to a number of times. Just finished talking about it, go to charter requirements. And Board on Track is, is the process that we were looking at in our last governance meeting. We had our, we had our Board on Track, which is our advisory board that we contract with. We had them, our governance rep call in and actually walk us through the Board on Track module that they have as part of their system. Very comprehensive, very robust, I think the comments may make Pauline miss something better than we've ever used in the past. And very much for me, reminds me sort of from a corporate standpoint, 360 evaluations. So really comprised of self-evaluation of the ED or by the ED. The board does the evaluation of the ED, as well as direct reports do that evaluation. It's a module that they've had in place since 2012. The question that I asked was, how pervasive is it? And the response was, they've had over 75 different organizations use this tool with good success. And Pauline had generated a prior email, which we talked about in more detail, some 60 questions. Questions are all replicated by board questions, ED questions, and also direct reports. They're all answering, responding to the same questions and covering all core competencies or co-competencies that relate to culture of excellence, driving academic excellence, student performance, management, so very broad and in-depth. And so that is the tool that we have reviewed in our last governance meeting that we're moving ahead with at this point. And we've set up sort of a timeline relative to the different aspects of that. First big ED self-evaluation, which I believe Dr. McCleary has already conducted that part. And we had a date there, June 20th, June 27th, we're asking that board members follow through and do their portion of the, respond to the questions, as well as direct reports. And on the 30th, that information, we're looking at being shared among the governance committee itself. And then at our next governance meeting in July, we will spend time actually pulling together themes that, so that a summary memo can be then developed, which we'll be sharing with Dr. McCleary. So that's sort of a rough timeline.
Do you have discussion about, okay, this, you know, please ask a question. Do you have discussion about what percentage of the board should complete that evaluation?
Everybody.
It seems to me that we should have 100% of the board complete that evaluation?
Yeah, it should be 100% of the board.
With the exception of the faculty who is, I believe, not eligible. So whether it's me or Tom, neither, but it's all equal.
All right, and I think the Board on Track, the invitation or the notice went out.
Yeah, to the board members. Now, what did not go out, however, is the direct reports, because that was something that I did want to hear, just confirmed that, that, you know, that's the, that was the governance committee's recommendation, but I did want to have something...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your...
On whether the board agrees with the governance committee's recommendation to have all direct reports provide input as well. So that, that has not gone out to the board yet.
So you want to have some discussion on that?
That I want to have.
I think that should be voluntary. I think it should be 100% of the board, but I think the direct report should be voluntary.
Another question that I had...
Really, I think it should be mandatory, but I think it should be...
Well, so, 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 so let me ask you a question. So the, the input, because the input is not necessarily confidential.
Good question.
It is.
It is.
Is this...
The input is confidential.
I think, I think some people, they not want to do that. And I think it's, I think it's an at-will type of thing that we have to...
How many, how many direct reports are we talking about?
I think so it's maybe seven.
So we talk about the, who, the principal, vice-principal, the department chair, is that...
Well, no, so that's actually something else to discuss, because the department chairs report to the principal, but that's, you know, we actually talked about governance, whether to include the department chairs or not. And obviously, that is a question, they, they often want a lot of input and are very close to teachers. We could ask the department chairs.
Well, so, so I think the question about whether you have direct reports, it gets to an issue of comfort. And I agree with Mike, you know, we want people to feel, so if you do a 360, you know, so the, the information goes into another company. So that's happening here too.
Correct, yeah, right.
And then based on, you know, based on a certain minimum number of reporting of people who, of raters, who provided input, then that information is, is anonymized, is gathered together. And typically, if you're providing narrative comments, those narrative comments are reported out as they were, as they were input. Is that what's happening here?
Yes, that is what happens.
So, so when the direct reports, their information would be, would be assembled together all in one group?
Right, it'd be all in one group.
The only, sorry, let's just say, the only, to, to, can I have some passion on this, I guess? So the only thing for me...
I'm actually bored.
The, so all literature says, we follow this in our company, that anything fewer than five is the number that it does not get reported. So if we have four respondents, you put all that information, that data is... Well, it's not discarded, but it's not provided as a report, a, we gotta try to...
Well, so that's why I was asking what the numbers are. Well, so, so the advantage of combining them all together, I hate to get into this, this level of detail, but the advantage of combining them all together is you get a larger rate of group. Therefore, it takes fewer, a smaller percentage of raider in order to have the information reported out.
Put it all together, if you have four, three people, that would be it.
No, I, well, so we do it on three, so, you know. So, so, and the reason why is, is if you nominate eight and three report, you don't know which three. Okay, I mean, you don't know which three reported out, which, which three didn't. But anyway, whether it's three or five, it is multiple, okay?
Yeah, it's not gonna report.
Now, the disadvantage of that is, is that the department chairs may have a different view of their interactions with the executive director than say, the principal or vice-principal does, okay? And so, you know, sometimes it's helpful to have them separate. I don't see how you can do that in this particular situation.
So the, the way that we have done it in the past is that board members have interviewed, you know, the direct reports, a couple of years ago, we did it that way, where teams of two board members tried to interview them, that was a very...
I, I think, I think where I'm falling in this, I would like to invite the direct reports and try to, to expand this out to, to, to participate, okay? And that would, to me, that would include the department chair.
Okay, direct reports to the department chair.
Are the department chairs direct reports to the director?
No.
And why would they be interviewed as direct reports? School leadership. But it's direct reports, it's...
Yeah, but it's so public, you're evaluating the executive director, he's the face of the school, and they have a different perspective of that.
Okay, it's legitimate. Direct reports is what it's designed for, and that's what direct report means.
So if I could just... I think the questions, I think, are general enough.
That they could answer them, yeah, is it like me?
Yeah.
Because none of the questions were, you know, a mom, yeah, the supervisory kind of...
And how do you make translation?
Yeah, it wasn't that, it really were these more like general things. Do you feel this person has to integrate?
So, go ahead. I was gonna say, so I want the data, but I'm uncomfortable with the numbers, because I think the danger is that when you get it to be small numbers, you run the risk of making some very big judgments. And sometimes, the people who fill out these surveys are on the bookends, and you're not really... So these are just very, these just feel like very small numbers to me.
Well, so if you add in the department chairs, that's actually more numbers. If you add in the department chairs, then it's actually more numbers.
Well, that, I think that's, that would make me more feel more comfortable...
And this is also a tool we designed for charter schools, we have small numbers. And in fact, 75 is going to be included.
Right.
I just think...
So I think Mike's caution is a valid caution, that we have to look at these numbers in light of what they are, once they're, once they've been given out.
It's how you treat the data, what you do with it, right?
But I'll be honest with you, I know you say the small numbers, but if there's seven direct reports and five are doing, or even four, that's, that's over 50%.
Well, it's, but if it's three, like, I, I'm just trying to figure out what feels okay to us, right? So maybe four feels okay, but what if three, I just want to, like, that's why I asked earlier on about, for us, 100% of the board feels right to me. That feels like we have all the data that we want. When we start to get into these other things, I just, I just wanna, you know, we can put it out there, but if we come back and we have two or three direct reports, we just have to decide if that's material now for us to action on. And I don't know, I don't know if it feels something...
I mean, I just feel that their, their input is actually more valuable than ours.
Yeah, I want to hear it, I just, it's just, you have to be careful too.
Also, the, the data does not get reported in fact.
Yeah, we need to talk about that process, right? Because the, you know, right...
Committee holds the data.
The committee holds the data, I also went back and forth with her after the governance meeting, because they really recommend that the committee that compiles the information and creates sort of a report is done in closed session, right, to really have that. And then that the report is what is shared with the whole board. So we have to talk about that small group, right?
Well, how do you do it in closed session?
You, you don't do it in, you just have to do it in a small group, it's a small task force. They recommend three people, and the government's decided, you know, maybe you should do it with five. They recommend a much smaller number of people to get that.
And then, so that small group produces a report that compiles all of the input? And then is that report then presented, like, at a public meeting like this?
Yeah, then that report, yeah, gets really presented.
And then how does the public or the, all of the stakeholders? I, I'm concerned that there might be a perception that, that that process is not transparent by going into a closed group.
Well, so first off, I don't think that's, what Pauline is saying is, and this is pretty standard practice, the raw data that goes in, there is, is a bunch of raw data that on its own, you know, needs, needs organization. And it's that organization that would, you know, that would create a report, okay? That would report, so if what you're saying is, how do we know that that is transparent? Well, that's, I think, what the, I think that's what the board is required to do. We own this part of the process. We can make certain things transparent, but ultimately, it's the, it's knowing what the inputs are and what the outputs are, okay? So I, you know, I share Jess's concern about transparency. I would like to see these questions posted, you know, as part of, you know, as part of our public record.
The questions?
Yeah, exactly. So, so people understand what the evaluation looks like. And so there's 13 areas, and each of them having, you know, four or five questions in it. I'd like to see... I'd like to see those, you know, out there so that they understand what the inputs are. Okay, once the inputs go in, you know, again, there's a lot of raw data that goes in through it, some of which is getting aside by Board on Track. But then.
Board on Track.
Oh, sorry. Board on Track, sorry. Is getting aside by Board on Track. But then someone's got to go in there and make sense, and make sense.
Yeah, and I, part of Board on Track's concern, frankly, is that you do it as 360, you do the direct reports there, that if you just publish everybody's data, then you're not going to get a full data.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Their concern is if you publish every, all the raw data, then you're not going to get.
But you can't.
Because you can't, it has to be done. You have a small group, with a smaller group that, and they recommend three people. And they write, be very clear, they recommend three people do this task force, and the board chair will be one of them, but not the actual person heading the committee. And that, you know, you pull in that, that smaller group who's going to then look at all the data.
Well.
That, that addresses my concern. I, I see where that is coming from and why that would be important. So I thank you for that.
So we really said, as the governance committee, we're going to take that raw data and pull those themes out, and then we'll end up discussing that in governance.
Well, I think something we can do is go to the general report. Evaluation committee.
So I'm, I'll volunteer for that, and I'll volunteer Mike for that too.
The smaller group. I mean, so we should talk about this. Do we want to have it be those five people in governance, or we could have it be candidate committee, it's just.
Well, so, so we've dealt with these kind of reports and these kind of data a lot. So there's advantage there.
Yeah.
I'd also suggest that one other advantage is that you all have a governance role, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of being sort of the, the appeal.
I know what you're trying to, you mean the two-step process, right? That's, that's another question.
So what's the deliverable? What's the deliverable look like? That can, I'll say this one.
Two-page level?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a.
Okay. I, I mean, I.